Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the 2019 Meet the Candidates for Loveland City Council. My name is Brad Greenberg. I'll be the moderator tonight. And I just want to welcome everybody for coming tonight. And I want to thank the Little Miami River Chamber of Commerce or Chamber Alliance for sponsoring tonight's event, as well as Loveland Magazine for sponsoring the event and also live streaming it on Facebook. So I want to also welcome all the people that are watching on Facebook as well. We're going to have the candidates start by giving two-minute introductions of themselves. We have candidates Kathy Bailey, Andy Bateman, Kent Blair, Corey O'Donnell, and Angie Satella. Welcome to all the candidates who are here. Thank you for being here. The agenda tonight is each candidate is going to start with a two-minute opening statement. And then we're going to have the questions that audience members submitted. And each candidate will get two minutes to respond to those questions. And then we'll conclude with two-minute closing statements from the candidates. So with those instructions in mind, we'll start with Kathy Bailey.
Thank you, Judge. Thank you, Chamber, and Dave Miller, certainly Pastor Bill, Judge Greenberg. Thank you all for having us here. And thank you, everyone, for being here. As you know, in 2017, there was a pretty radical change after that election to your council. I think we've accomplished a lot in these 22 short months. One important thing is we've mended relationships with the farmers' market, with the school district, and also with the chamber. The downtown is clearly thriving by any measure. We put in place the DORA, the Open Container District, and added a lot of events so that we could keep our downtown vibrant. We have purchased property in order to build a garage so that we can take care of one of the two complaints we hear all the time, the other being traffic. We are working on that, but that's a little finger fix. We did do a completed master plan for the downtown, which has not been done in over 10 years, so that we are well positioned to deal with any new development that might come. We're now working our way towards the next part of that master plan, which would be the Loveland Madera Corridor, the West Loveland Business District, and also the rest of our neighborhoods. So that starts in 2020. Our road rehabilitation program, only a few years ago, we were putting $300,000-some thousand dollars towards our roads. This year, it was over $800,000. Next year, we're looking to budget $1.2 million-plus towards our roads so we can finally get our roads back to maintenance levels. We hired two school resource officers in partnership with St. Columban and the school district. We also, in all of that, including the garage, we've been able to do without coming to you for taxes like your neighboring communities have had to do. We have been fiscally conservative, but where we see needs, where we see opportunities, we've taken them because we need to keep moving this city forward. I think our economic development, our income tax is rising every year. We have $400,000 more this year in our general fund due to revenues than we did a year ago, and that just keeps getting better. So there are many reasons to be optimistic. I'm running so that I can be part of all the good things that are happening in this city going forward.
Thank you. So I'm Andy Bateman. This is actually my second opportunity to run for city council. Two years ago, I ran, and the impetus for running was to get involved, to foster a spirit of civility, of collaboration, compromise within the city government. And so I've been really pleased to see the changes that have taken place in the last two years with the relationship between the citizens and our government. And I'm putting my hat in the ring once again to become a bigger contributor to that change and to that spirit of collaboration with our community. So just a little bit about me. I've lived in Loveland, in the city, since 2007. But I first fell in love with the city about 15 years ago, when I started bartending at Paxton's and later the Works. This was a really great sense of what would be later to come in terms of my enjoyment of historic preservation and understanding some of the community elements within the city. Obviously, we have great natural resources. We have tremendous historic assets that need to be preserved. But I think what's best is really what I learned those first early years of my youth bartending is that we have a great community. Everybody knows your name in Loveland, and that's something that we should be really proud to continue to develop. And I've been really pleased to see the council and the committees that I serve on develop that engagement over the last two years with the Downtown Development Master Plan, the Loveland U program, as well as the Charter Review, or just some examples of how the citizens and the committees have really leveraged their input and have created real change in the city. And so with that said, those are the types of programs that I would like to be a part of and to drive forward is to continue that element of citizen engagement and collaboration and working to achieve equitable compromise on the various issues that come before the council.
Good evening. My name's Kent Blair. I want to thank the judge and all of you and Mr. Miller for attending. It's a tribute to the community involvement that we all share. I grew up in California. I first came to Ohio 50 years ago with a buddy who was from Middletown and fell absolutely in love with Ohio. I had never seen, it was the middle of summer, coming from Los Angeles, I'd never seen anything so green, and my whole life was Ohio in the summer. I moved here 14 years ago. My son Tommy started at LACC, went all the way through school in Loveland Schools, graduated from Loveland High School, and is now a sophomore at Ohio State. I have been a part of Loveland's amazing charity race since its inception, and that's how I originally came to be involved and engaged with Loveland City Government. I have served on Loveland City Council since January of 2018, and I am very proud of all that we've accomplished in that time. As the mayor pointed out, the renaissance of downtown, the revamp of the safety center, we restored relationships with the Chamber Alliance and the school district. We started Loveland University. We encouraged, participated in, and ultimately passed a community-led downtown plan, the DORA ordinance, all the events that have gone on from the trails, ales, and...
Race.
That's it. The farmers' market, and of course, the race. All of it, all of it, has been done in a fiscally responsible manner. I'm running to make sure that Loveland is the kind of town that my son Tommy wants to come back to after he gets out of college. Can't happen soon enough. Because I value the opportunity to serve and because there's so much more to do.
Good evening. My name is Corey O'Donnell. I also want to thank the judge, the panel, all of you folks for being here this evening. You might know that I am the new candidate on the block. I have no political background whatsoever, never run for a political office, so this is my step, putting my toe in the water. I have been living in this area for 36 years, a resident of Loveland for almost six years. I have a passion to protect the taxpayer. I'm not sure that we are doing the job that we should be when it comes to our finances. So every time I've come before council or made comments about my interest in this, it's always been about the resident taxpayer and getting a fair deal for them. I think along with that, we have some economic development issues that need to be addressed. We just can't pay lip service to it. We've really got to have some action behind it. So those are the things that I'm thinking about. I think that we need, as a city, to have better communication. I'm not saying it's bad now, I just think it could be a lot better. And I think that having that opportunity for all of you folks to converse with council and have real responses to the inquiries is invaluable to you, as well as it would be to me.
Good evening. Thank you for inviting me tonight. I'm Angie Satella. I think I'm just going to tell you a little bit about myself. I'm all about fiscal responsibility and how your taxpayer dollars are being spent. I'll continue to focus on doing those things without new taxes and with less government intrusion. I have a lot of knowledge and honed my leadership skills as a councilwoman and a former vice mayor. I have 32 years' experience as an accountant and an executive, and that adds to my qualifications for this position. I've served on several committees, including the Finance and the Planning and Zoning Commission. So I have gained a lot of knowledge, in-depth knowledge, regarding city operations, the budget process, and economic development. I was a trustee on the Loveland Sims Fire Department, and I'm proud to say that I'm a graduate of the Loveland Police Department Citizens Academy and the Loveland Sims Fire Department Academy. And as a result of that, I've gained a great appreciation for the work of the men and women who protect our community. I'm also involved in several other areas. I was president of my homeowner association. I serve as president of several clubs, and I volunteer for several city nonprofit groups. And I mention these activities because community involvement is very, very important. It's very important as a councilperson. I've met many constituents and have a better understanding of people's issues and what they want us to do and what their concerns are. I don't just go to council meetings twice a month. I take time to understand the issues and always fully prepare for the items that are going to be discussed on the agenda. Those of you who have seen council meetings know I am an independent thinker. You know, I get a lot of satisfaction in helping residents. I really get a lot of satisfaction to help somebody with a problem. I enjoy piling what I've learned over the years in my job as a councilwoman. I've been honored to represent you, and I've been honored to be your councilwoman, and I hope to continue to do so.
Thank you, candidates. We're going to move next to the questions, and I apologize, I forgot to introduce Bill Hamschel, who worked with me on this a couple years ago. So Bill, thank you for being here and helping and reading. He's going to read the questions tonight. And the way it's going to work is we're going to try to be fair and have each person get to respond first. So the first question, everyone will get to answer it, but Mr. Bateman will get to go first.
All right. Two questions were submitted to us in reference to the same subject, so I'm going to put them together, okay? The subject is this: Downtown Strategic Development Plan. First question was, what are your thoughts, opinions on the proposed Road Diet and Yard and Company Master Plan? Along with that, on packet two, page 47, West Loveland Avenue, the Road Diet, again, your opinion, are you for it or against it? And if you are for it, explain your thinking on why this will help alleviate the congestion we have in Loveland.
Okay. Thank you for the question, the two-part question regarding the Road Diet on West Loveland. So first of all, as a resident who lives on East Loveland, I'm quite familiar with the challenges of navigating through the first light at 48, then the bike lane, then the second light, and then up into the four-lane bridge. I am really grateful for a lot of the infrastructure recommendations that came from the Downtown Strategic Development Plan. The Road Diet, as I understand it, was proposed in many respects as a pilot program, so there would be multiple scenarios that would be tested. And as somebody that is a very cautious and careful decision-maker, I'm all for pilot programs and testing and understanding the implications of decisions rather than rushing forward. So I would be for that program to evaluate what might be a feasible solution to alleviate congestion as you move across West Loveland into the historic West Loveland District. My personal thoughts on this, I have a few specific opinions. One of them would be to carry forward the left turn only all the way through the Riverside intersection on the left lane, because I often see many cars are doing just that. So I think that that would be something to help eliminate people trying to make an aggressive pass across that intersection. I also think that widening or creating bicycle lanes would be an alternative plan as well that I'd like to see. As an avid cyclist, I don't necessarily feel unsafe, given the two lanes, but I see a lot of people trying to ride their bike on that sidewalk there, which is kind of in need of repair. So I think it would be, it behooves us to look at a different cycle path across West Loveland. So again, I hope I've answered the question, but in my opinion, I would be for testing different traffic patterns along West Loveland and evaluating them to see if any of them are long-term feasible solutions.
Mr. Blair.
I'm a big fan of the downtown plan, particularly because it was developed and the bones put flesh upon by the involvement of the community. I have always been, I've always been a fan of trying new things. If something's not working, if something's a problem, let's try whatever works. You never know what's going to work. And the notion of a Road Diet, the notion of trying different layouts and different configurations for West Loveland Avenue, I think is a great idea. If it doesn't work, we'll try something else. If it doesn't work, we'll try something else. The traffic comes down West Loveland, down the hill on West Loveland Avenue, it's two lanes. At Loveland Madera, it turns to four lanes, and you go over the, you go over the bridge, and it's back to two lanes again. That's, that's not, that's not a recipe for success. There are multiple causes, multiple sources of the traffic downtown. The Road Diet is one possible solution. I think we should keep an open mind about it and try it out, see if it works.
I am certainly not a traffic engineer, but I think we have, excuse, I think we would all agree that we do have a traffic flow issue in many parts of our downtown area, even when we get on Loveland Madera and the theaters and into 48, and so on and so forth. I'm not certain that testing all these things in a practical situation where for two months we do it this way, and four months we do it that way, and two weeks we do this, that would lead to mass confusion. I think there are models out there, computer models, that can have the input of what our traffic flow is, and people that are seriously engaged in this type of work, they can tell you right away what is going to work and what is not going to work. It's not, it's not something that I think we want to put our citizens and our visitors to this community to an ever-changing situation. I think there are computer models that can take care of this with little or no problem.
We've had traffic problems for several years, and the city is trying different things to alleviate the problems. We did, we had a traffic study done by a Loveland resident several years ago, and one of the things we ended up doing was the turn lane on Carl Brown Way. We did, we bought some sensor lights to regulate the traffic flow. So if you're going through and there's nobody coming the opposite way, why don't you set it alight? So there was, there were two of those installed. I think we've tried different things over the years. The issue becomes, to me, the area immediately in downtown, because where we have the bike trail crossing, that is really a bottleneck, because we still have people who think you have to stop for pedestrians in the crosswalk. You really should yield, that's the state law. But that's an issue there, and I know we've been addressing that. I'm for trying new things. The Road Diet, I guess my question on that is who's going to pay to do that? I've never gotten an answer on that. To me, that's an expensive thing to try. So we have tried things over the years. My favorite thing to do, which I don't think is possible, but I wish we could do it, is just to cover over the middle and make that a walkway. If you've been to some historic downtowns, it's a walkway. They don't have traffic going through town. That's not actually a realistic thing, but I really, when I dream about what I could do and what I could change, that would be something I'd like to do. I'm all for trying things. I think we've tried a lot of things, but I'm like you, I don't want to keep trying different things and seeing if it's going to work, because it just confuses and the traffic becomes worse. That's the main thing that I always hear from people, and it's traffic during morning and evening commute. Those are people going home, not looking for a place to park to go downtown. So yes, we can try different things, and we have tried different things.
I don't know. I don't know if it's a good idea or not. I'm not an engineer. When I first saw that, I had the same reaction, I'm sure a lot of people did, was that sounds crazy. But maybe it's not. I don't know. I'm not for putting money into trying it to see if it works. I would want to spend some time with an engineer and have an engineer actually look at it and tell us if this is a feasible alternative or not, because it's a pretty radical approach. It makes some intuitive sense to me that we do go from two lanes to four lanes to two lanes, so how much is that really helping? That all of a sudden opens up for four lanes for a short period of time. I'm not sure it really helps all that much. Maybe using one of those lanes as a bike lane and the middle lane as a turn lane wouldn't cause the traffic that we're all thinking of would, but I just don't know. I have no idea. That's one of those ideas that I think are very interesting and not one that I would reject outright, because I don't know enough to do that. I would want to get some more information before we put any resources into doing that. But there are a lot of things that we're trying and looking at with regard to traffic, because as I said earlier, that is a, one of the two big things we hear about daily. And there's, there is a fix, I suppose, for it, one that we're starting the conversation about, you know, finding another way around Loveland, but that is not going to happen in the next couple of years. So we keep doing little incremental things and hoping that those make a difference, and we'll keep looking at it and researching it. But I'm not going to reject this idea, but it's not going to happen tomorrow either. We need to take a better look at it before we decide on that.
All right. Thank you. All right. The next question will go first to Mr. Blair.
The question is, what is the best way to fund the design for the planned parking garage, the land purchase and construction, and what has been assumed to fund it by the present council?
Can you repeat the question?
Yes, sir. The planned parking garage, this is the subject. What is the best way to fund the design, the land purchase, and the construction? And what has been assumed to fund it by the present council?
Thank you for repeating the question. The best way has not been determined yet. We have acquired the property with the intent of building the garage. We have some ideas about what the garage can look like, how it can be constructed, how ingress and egress to the garage can be obtained and improved with surrounding infrastructure, but we haven't decided yet. Those discussions are still underway, and those decisions are yet to be made.
Thank you. I find this to be a very interesting question. I'm not a politician, I mentioned that before, but I would think that before we spend our tax dollars, and I believe the number is somewhere between $700,000 and $800,000, of taxpayer money that you folks are going to fund, that there would have been a business plan already in place. We know exactly what we're going to do. We know how it's going to work, how it's going to be funded, who's going to pay for it, who's going to operate it, who's going to build it. We would know all that. I find it hard to believe that our current city council would invest real money in a plan and not know what the end game is. I'm astounded at that. I hear the numbers of $7 million for this project. I have to go back and see. I wrote a letter that many of you have probably read, and I said to myself, how does this get paid for? Is this just a gift to the residents? I think we need to think long and hard about how we do this. Why isn't a surface lot sufficient? We can't, we can't fill a parking garage two or 300-plus spots on a regular basis. It would be, it would be just such a short period of time. We could use a surface lot that has 100, 150 spots and not cost $7 million. So I think that the right thing to do is to back up to square one, and if we can get out of putting that $700,000 into the lot right now, or the lots, I should say, I think we should hold off on it. If it costs us $100,000, that might save us $6.9 million.
My issue with the proposed traffic or proposed parking garage is this. There really was never a cost-benefit analysis done before the land was purchased, because now, as some others have said, we haven't decided how we're going to even fund it. Well, if it's going to be a $7 or $8 million parking garage, which is the figures I've seen from the city manager, there's no way we can pay for that. We would have to issue bonds if the city's going to go ahead and build the parking garage. If we issue bonds, that's, let's say it's a $7 or $8 million bond. The debt service on that bond is going to be over $400,000 a year, and the debt service is the principal and interest, if you want to look at it that way. That's what we would be spending. That's what our taxpayers would have to pay every year to pay off that $7 or $8 million bond. That's a lot of money. So to me, I think the best, I don't know, I don't think we should be in the business of running a parking lot. I mean, when I say "we," I say the city of Loveland. I don't think that's the role of the city. I would like to see us get a private developer, either to take that over, buy the land from us with the intent of building, building a parking garage, and that way, that person could make whatever money out of it. Our plan doesn't even know whether we're going to charge people to park there. If we don't charge people, that's a big $7 million investment with no return to you as the taxpayer.
I don't think there's any question, traffic and parking are our two main issues. Yes, this is a bold move, buying this property and looking to build a garage, but we are looking to solve a huge problem that has been a problem for many years, and we can put this parking issue to rest. As far as who's going to fund it, a few answers. That's what we would be spending. That's what our taxpayers would have to pay every year to pay off that seven or eight million dollar bond. That's a lot of money. So to me, I think the best, I don't know, I don't think we should be in the business of running a parking lot. I mean, when I say we, I say the city of Loveland. I don't think that's the role of the city. I would like to see us get a private developer, either to take that over, buy the land from us with the intent of building, building a parking garage. And that way, that person could make whatever money out of it. Our plan doesn't even know whether we're going to charge people to, to park there. If we don't charge people, that's a big seven million dollar investment with no return to you as the taxpayer.
I don't think there's any question, traffic and parking are our two main issues. Yes, this is a, a bold move, buying this property and looking to build a garage, but we are looking to solve a huge problem that has been a problem for many years and we can put this parking issue to rest. As far as who's going to fund it, a few answers to that. One, we are, have already applied or going to by the next week to the state to try to get some money through the state capital budget fund. We also have been in constant contact with our bond council. Yes, we will have to issue bonds to do it, much like what was being proposed several years ago for city hall. We have been in contact with our financial advisors. All of whom have looked at our budget, at what we spend, at what we have, at what, at what are, what we are looking like in the future, and have said, absolutely, the city can afford to do this. Yes, we will charge for the garage. I think the majority of people that come to visit our city are not Loveland residents. I think they'd be very happy to, to pay a small amount of money to be able to park without driving around for ten minutes looking for a parking place. Seems to me that, that we should get what we can as far as a revenue stream from those that are visiting our city. There's a restaurant opening in Bellas in, in Tecca Emilia at the end of this month. There's another restaurant that is being built as we speak behind the, what was Bond Furniture. We keep adding restaurants, we keep adding businesses. We are, we cannot expect them to flourish and to continue to be successful if we don't give them the infrastructure they need to continue to be, to have their businesses here. We pay for all of this through income tax, which as I said, is rising every year because of our economic development. So we, we, as I said, we have looked at, we have talked to financial advisors, we have talked to bond council, we have been certainly rest assured that we can afford to do this given our financial situation. And my time is up.
So with, with regards to the, the proposed parking garage, design, development and funding, first of all, I think that this was an example of opportunity knocking at, at an opportune time, when traffic and parking is clearly an emerging issue that's becoming more and more pertinent for everybody that lives and visits and works in the city of Loveland. So I think that, you know, the, the process is evolving and I, I had confidence that the city staff and the city council were following the due diligence when it came to the purchasing of the property and then also the, what will presumably follow in terms of the planning for funding and the development of the structure. So as, as Mayor Bailey mentioned, I, I feel like the, the financials, health of the city is in a good place to where it, the rates are, are good as well from what our bond rating is as, as a city. I also know from being on several committees in the city that nobody gets more grants than our city manager. So he's got a knack for being able to, you know, find funding sources where others might not be aware of their existence. So I think that that's two elements that are in our favor in terms of being able to fund this parking garage. And I'd also say that the fact that if it was a city-owned parking garage and the ability to capture revenue from, let's say tourism into the city, regional tourism from non-city residents, I think is a, is a good opportunity long-term to be able to use those funds to help pay for the garage, but then also use that as a revenue stream to fund other projects in the future. So I think that I have faith in the council's ability to continue down the path and evaluate this as a, a long-term viability solution for our parking and traffic problem.
All right. Thank you. The next question will go first to Mr. Adama.
I want to try to be very clear on this question. We've got several questions on this subject, and I just want to make sure that we try to get everybody's question, and they were all very good, and try to give you the opportunity to answer them, okay? One of the questions was asked, if the Loveland City School District buys the Grailville property to develop it into schools, explain the potential cost to the city and our infrastructure, the police and so forth. And then the question was asked, have we done or can we ask or demand a traffic study on the impact of the new school? And of course, this question is asked before the levy vote. Many of us are city residents, but not school district residents. We can't vote on the levy, but we can vote for council, how they feel whether a study has been done on the impact of the new school, if that should go through. Does that make a sense to all of you? No, I could tell by your look, it does not. Okay, what we're asking you is to give us your thoughts about the impact on our city if the school should buy the Grailville property.
First part was okay.
How?
The second part's it was...
Okay. The second part is, this person wanted to know is a possibility or has there been a traffic study done on that impact? And apparently, we know that that cannot be done probably before the vote coming up for the school levy. But the concern was, was there any consideration by the city on the impact of our infrastructure if the school levy passes and they get that property? Okay? Everybody say, Corey?
Mr. Adama, go ahead. Very interesting question for our community. If the school levy passes, you're going to be looking at a lot of construction throughout the city, but specifically Grailville, clean land, plenty of space and a very difficult place to get to. Route forty-eight in both directions, East Loveland Boulevard, West Loveland Boulevard, Paxton, Ward's Corner. These are two-lane roads that we're talking about and I can only imagine what would happen to the traffic flow from six-thirty in the morning until probably eight, eight fifteen, and from two o'clock in the afternoon until, what, four-thirty? I don't have kids in school anymore, so I don't know exactly what the times are. But I, I think it would be a huge challenge to those people trying to commute in and out of those areas. Has there been a, a traffic study? I, I would hope that the people that are proposing this school levy would have thought about that and would have done some due diligence, would have talked to the city about their plans, so that once again, you ask for money or you plan on spending money, but if they don't have the whole plan in place now, what are we going to get at the end? It's, it's the same mindset. I don't have the answers to this, I just know that it's going to be a huge deal. Do we need the schools? Of course we need to have help with our schools. That's the spankest of men to think that we're not. I don't want to get involved in the issue of how much it is, but if their plans are going to go through, it's going to be a big deal and it's going to have a huge impact on our community. So I think that it would be wise if we had all this in place before people go to cast a vote. Thank you.
I just wanted to mention something on the previous question regarding the parking garage. Obtaining finances is an issue here, and even if people pay for the garage, they're going to have to pay a lot for us to recoup seven or eight million dollars. So I don't know that we're going to get a lot of revenue stream right away after that. But anyway, to go to this, the question about the, the schools. I know several council people have said that the schools are separate from city council and we really don't have anything to do with their voting or how they decided what the, the levy was going to be and how they went about doing it. And I would say that, yes, we're two separate entities, but we're connected at the hip. The Loveland schools are located, are the, the schools are all located in Loveland. The school buses use our streets every day. I think it was mentioned that we provide a school resource officer, we provide two to the Loveland schools. So we are connected and if there were, hopefully there were conversations with the school board, not necessarily over the levy, but the impact on the city, because there's going to be a tremendous impact on the city. Regardless of the levy amount, think about the logistics. I think that would be a nightmare. I know the school did not do a traffic study, they did not do a formal traffic study to know whether or not traffic's going to increase or not. I just can't believe that it wouldn't increase. And think about the schools going through at the commute times of other people trying to get through to work, going and coming. So the city could be involved in a lot of extra expense if we have to do the streets. If you drive those streets, they're narrow. It's going to be very difficult for two buses to get through. I don't know if the school's done any work on trying to figure out timing of, of classes. I just think there's a lot of things that are going to impact us. The infrastructure for sure, and if we have to redo streets, those are our streets. That'll be our city taxpayer money used for that.
All right, we need to keep going. Schedule here, next is, is family.
The schools are separate from the city, there's no question about that, but we also understand that, that we need each other and, and as the schools goes, as the schools go, we go. That is why we have made sure that we have ended relationships with our school district and have a very positive relationship at this point, and have been in constant communication with the school district throughout this process. With regard to infrastructure, there are several different aspects to that. One would be if Grailville is where these schools go, would be water and sewer, that would be included in the construction cost for the school, because the city would not pay for those infrastructure improvements. Our water tower at White Pillars is more than capable of a million gallons of water to handle any development on Grailville, whether it be a school campus or any other type of development. That is a, my understanding is the main entrance to the school would be on forty-eight, that is the state route, so it would be the state that would be dealing with any changes that needed to be made to that road to accommodate the entrance to the school. If there needs to be some change to the, to our roads, I, I can't imagine what that would be. We have two-lane roads now in front of our schools and our managing is fine, but if that were to happen, if this were to pass on November fifth, these schools are not going to be there on November sixth. We will have plenty of time, two to three years, to determine how and how we need to address what, what is coming down the road. As for police, I, I don't see any, any difference in our, in our police presence, they're patrolling the campuses now. The fire is providing fire services to the campuses now, so even if they're at Grailville, that's not a problem. So I, as for traffic impact, I don't know. I, I don't know whether that would be a, a huge concern or not. There, there are, a little more than actually, a third of the students live at the Miami, in Miami Township anyway. So those kids, instead of coming over the river, will be staying on that side of the river. So I don't know if it's a wash completely, but I don't know if it's the, the big concern that, that we, we were talking about. But regardless, people are allowed to develop and city has to adjust and we, and we will adjust as we have always done with any development.
So this is a, this is a, a, a good question and it's a, and it's an important issue for all of us to weigh in on. So my personal opinion is I think whether the levy passes or not, I don't think that the conversation about the schools being at the Grailville property is going to go away. And I, and living on East Loveland, it's a particular interest to me because it means that there's going to be a whole influx of school buses and, and people, and traffic up in, in the opposite direction. So it's with particular interest that I've been watching this story as it's developed this year. Clearly, it's going to have an impact on infrastructure and as Mayor Bailey referenced, there's, you know, systems in place to, to handle many of those unanswered questions. I know from a very local level, from the East Loveland neighborhood, that I believe that that road is up for some construction improvements on the, on the capital improvement plan in a couple of years. Specifically, the bridge is something that, that stands, Bear's Creek, that's something that I think, it's a seventy-year-old bridge. If there's a school on the other side of that bridge that our children are going to be riding across, they're probably going to make repairs to that, to that bridge, and I'm sure that that's a Clermont County engineer issue. I, I'd like to see some sidewalks and some pedestrian-friendly elements added into that East Loveland, so that the neighbors in that area could have an option to safely walk to school on a, on a nice day, it's not that far. But buses travel that road all the time. It's within the Loveland school district, so I, you know, I'm not so concerned about the, the road with themselves. With regard to a traffic study, I think that as any development of this size is to, is to happen, there's obviously needs to be some impact studies done and, and that a lot of the work that we, that the city has undertaken to understand potential infrastructure improvements could be rolled into that.
At the end of the day, three-quarters of the people who are going to vote for the levy cannot vote for city council. So whether you're for or against the levy itself, it's pretty much irrelevant in terms of city council. Everybody, every voter in Loveland could vote for the levy and it could still go down. Every voter in Loveland could vote against the levy and it could still pass. And the city, and the citizens of Loveland would be the ones, as has been mentioned earlier, having to figure out how to do the infrastructure. I think if, if the levy pa, if the levy passes, as, as has been said before, we'll figure it out. We'll, we'll, we'll engage in the, in the issues and the studies that have to be done to figure it out. If it doesn't pass, then I think, before they come back again, I think it might, might be a good idea for the school district to sit down with the city and now that we've got a much better relationship, say, okay, if there's going to be infrastructure changes on the part of the city, what does that look like? How can we help mitigate that? What sorts of grants? What sorts of investments do we have to make to get that done?
All right, the final question of the evening will go to Ms. Setell, and I'm hoping it's not another multi-partner.
No, this is going to be very simple, okay? A lot of discussion, of course, has been made in reference to downtown Loveland across the river. This question comes asking this, what is your thoughts about the Loveland Madera corridor on this side of the river?
Well, I remember when I ran the first time, one of my platform issues was to do something with the Loveland Madera.
Angie, hit your button.
I'm sorry. Is it on?
Yeah.
Okay. I was saying that I think every candidate who runs for office puts down on their platform, do something about Loveland Madera corridor. And once you get involved in the city and you learn about the Loveland Madera corridor, it's a very difficult thing to do anything with the Loveland Madera corridor because of the Chopper's Haven. Chopper's Haven is the biggest piece of the Loveland Madera corridor. So that is a privately owned business, so it's difficult to make any impact there. We have been able to do several things to fill storefronts though, over the years. A couple of years ago, we actually started, if you know where the Kemper, Kemper Loveland Madera corner is, Starbucks came in there. We moved them from down the road into that area so they could have a drive-through. So we started, I think, a very good plan there. We got Starbucks in there, Chipotle, we've got some others in there. So that corner started to fill out. We filled out a lot of the other storefronts, the tender chicken place came in. And as best we can do with the Loveland corridor, I know there's been some changes made as far as signage and colors. So that, that really is an area that I'm hoping when the downtown master plan people come along, they have some ideas. But I think our, our real issue there is trying to make sure that we get some quality businesses into the storefronts that are still vacant. into the storefronts that are still vacant.
Well, as I mentioned when I started this evening, we recognize how important Loveland Madeira Corridor is, and that's why we're turning our attention to that with the next phase of our master plan. And hopefully, we'll have some ideas that come from that. The biggest piece actually on Loveland Madeira at this point is the schools. So whether you're for or against this levy, if the levy passes, that is a really a golden opportunity for the city to take that piece of property in conjunction and work with the school and, and see what we can do on Loveland Madeira. We certainly would look at putting in a TIF and try to make that some sort of a boulevard that would hopefully rejuvenate that. But regardless of that, you know, where the bowling alley was, we brought Oasis in. You know, the biggest chunk of our revenue comes from income tax, and that's from non-residents, it's from people that come into the city and, and work here. And Oasis is over 1.5 million payroll that we just, we just got to bring into the city with over 50 employees, so that's a huge get for the city, I think. We, it is a challenge, Loveland Madeira is the oldest, I guess the first sort of retail location in the city, and it does need to be rejuvenated, and we will certainly give it as much attention as it deserves, and it's gonna start, I think, with that master
I would say, give it time. I think that the rejuvenation, or revitalization, whatever kind of buzzword you wanna call it from a development side, is coming in Loveland Madeira, it's only a matter of time. Mayor Bailey mentioned the schools, that is certainly, you know, an opportunity for new development. If the schools were to vacate that property, whatever goes in its place certainly would be sort of an anchor to a new phase of development along Loveland Madeira. I look at Oasis Turf and Tree as a great example of what Loveland Madeira in the future could look like, and I'm thrilled that it's a sort of a job-creating development as well. I think it's great that we've got this very well-established and regarded lawn care company that's made its home right there in the commercial district of Loveland Madeira. I think that that in and of itself could be harbinger of things to come. On another note though, I think what's important about Loveland Madeira is gonna be walkability and livability. There's a lot of people that have very close proximity, walking distance to that area. You see them every day along the sidewalks. I think it's gonna be really important that the development caters to folks that have that kind of access, similar to the way, what it is for my wife and my family in downtown Loveland. We love being able to walk to downtown. I think Loveland Madeira needs to hold that same element of enjoyment and accessibility for the folks that live within a five-to-10-minute walk of that district.
A couple of years ago, I had a long conversation with someone about the notion of staging a, a blind pizza test, where you would have every pizza parlor on Loveland Madeira Road submit a pizza of the same mix, a pepperoni pizza, to a blind taste test. I mean, it would take, it'd be 25, 30 people to eat all that pizza. Loveland Madeira Road is a tremendous opportunity. For Chopper's Haven is a great, is a great resource, but if you, if you stand in the McDonald's parking lot and look across to that school property, that's where, that's where the goldmine ultimately will be. Is it gonna be two years, five years, 10 years? I don't know, but the school site is, is, is going to be as much of a renaissance for Loveland Madeira Road as, as Bishop's Corner and Ramsey's and Tonos has been for downtown Loveland. It's just a matter of time. Whether, the school, the school district obviously has a lot to say about that, but a master plan will certainly help us put together a vision that's community-based, that has community input, and is, is, is led by the thought process of the community
I certainly agree with parts of everything that you've said, but there's one missing component in this, and that is that it is a valuable piece of, of real estate that should have an economic development director whose job it is, employed by the city, to make sure that we get the best use out of that land, and not with more retail. I mean, we've got enough retail space there if we just utilize it, but we need to have high-paying jobs that are brought there by office buildings, by companies that employ 30, 40, 50, 80 people to bring those tax dollars in here, to build buildings that are not retail. We've, we've certainly got enough retail. You've got, if you've got an economic development director, that their focus is on that, they know people, places, opportunities, that I think the city may be missing because we don't have an economic development director. That would be my, my, my plan. Hire one, because it's a goldmine.
All right, thank you, candidates. That concludes the questions, we're going to now wrap up. Each candidate is going to be able to give a two-minute closing argument. Since we went in alphabetical order for the opening statements, let's go in reverse alphabetical order, start with Ms. Satell.
Thank you again to Cece and the chamber. I wish we had more questions. Thank you Judge Brad Greenberg and fellow candidates for your input, and everyone for being here tonight, and special thanks to Bruce Satell, who's put up with me for 46 In 2012, I was accused of being divisive. It's funny how history comes out of nowhere, and I was accused of being divisive because I voted no to two key votes. The 25% income tax increase and the $2.5 million water tower. I was accused of being divisive because I voted no on those two issues. I'm going to read my response that was published in the Loveland Herald. So here's what I wrote. "The fact that members of council disagree on a few issues is only divisive if labeled so by those who feel that they must defend their position. As General Patton said, 'If everybody is thinking alike, then somebody isn't thinking.' As a council member, my intent is to always do my job, consider input from constituents, and the economic impact my decisions have on them. Ask questions, get all the facts, do my research, and vote my conscience. It's much easier to nod and say yes, to go along, to get along, and to rubber stamp whatever is placed before me, but that's not leadership, and is definitely a disservice to the citizens I represent and whose interests are my only concern. That's who I was in 2012, and that's who I still am today. I'm the number-one independent voice on council, and I hope after Election Day, there are three.
Thank you for having me this evening. My background is in private enterprise. I, I think I know the basics of running a profitable business. I know I understand what it is to have a plan that works, one that's well-thought-out, not something that's on the, on the if come, we're gonna, if this happens, we'll do that so and so. We, we need to have a clear picture so that we can represent to the taxpayers of our community exactly what we're getting involved with. I know that this parking garage is a big deal. I said in front of council, we need more parking, but I don't believe we have the ability to afford a $7 million investment. I, I just can't wrap my arms around it. As I said a moment ago, I think we need economic development hardcore in this community because we do have a goldmine. We've done a wonderful job of bringing business and traffic to downtown. I'm not so sure that we can support more retail in downtown, bring more visitors, if we don't get some kind of parking, but not $7 million. I also think that I would bring to this community an opportunity for people to have a dialogue. I can tell you that in the past year, I've reached out to City Council, I've reached out to people formerly on City Council, had questions answered about some interests that I had in properties that we own, and I got zero response from one of them, and another one completely ignored me. I don't think that's the way a city council is supposed to operate. I think it's supposed to be a dialogue, and if I were elected to the position, I can guarantee you that we would have a dialogue on a regular basis. Open, honest, forthwith, no hidden agendas. Lay it on the table. Thank you very much.
Also, I want to thank everyone for attending. This has been a great experience for me, and I also want to, I want to express appreciation for all the people on the campaign trail who have taken the time to talk with me, especially those who have disagreed with me. I'm a big believer that democracy dies in darkness, and I have pledged before, and I'll reinstate that pledge tonight, that I will work with my colleagues on council to foster open communications between ourselves and the community. We have nothing to hide. We can only make Loveland better if we're all involved, if we all talk to each other, that's what builds consensus. All politics is local. I feel extremely fortunate to live in a community that values what's in your heart more than what's written on a button on your lapel. I am asking for your vote, for me and for the three Bs on November 5th. Thanks.
Thank you very much to the Little Miami Chamber Alliance, to Pastor Bill, Judge Greenberg, Loveland Magazine, and for everybody in attendance, and of course, to my wife, Rachel, who is probably the one person who's most excited for November 6th. I promise that, you know, 100% of my time, right at, right at that point, Rach. In all seriousness, in all seriousness, you know, it's been a long journey to get to know everyone for me over the last five, six years, as I embarked wholeheartedly on a commitment of service and volunteerism in the city. I'm really humbled by the support that I've gotten, both in 2017, but in particular 2019, and I feel like, you know, while I ran last time as an independent, I really ran as an introduction, I think. And it's been really great to, to see the outpouring support that I've gotten from so many people in the community, and to introduce myself to people who I've not met. And I think that that's the type of open approach that I would bring to council, that accessibility, that willingness to listen, and to, really to take on points of view that I might not be able to, to hear for myself unless I'm hearing it from someone else. I think that that's an important quality that I would bring to council, is empathy, understanding, collaboration, the ability to work with others, the ability to hear from another perspective, and to let that other perspective, you know, shape my own and help to make decisions that are for the good of everyone. I think that's, at the end of the day, what government's job is, is to, you know, do for the citizens what they can't do for themselves, and I'm really looking forward to an opportunity to do that. So again, thank you, everyone, for the support that you've given up to this point, and I look forward to earning your vote on November 5th.
Thank you again to all of you responsible for putting this on tonight. My background is as an assistant prosecuting attorney in Helms County Prosecutor's Office, which is where I met the judge for the first time many, many years ago. I had no inclination or desire to be in politics. I was asked four years ago to run, and had no idea admittedly what I was getting into at that time. Now here I am, four years later, with my eyes wide open, and now instead of running because I was asked, I'm running because it's very important to me to be part of this city and its future, and getting where I know we can get, and I want to be part of that. My favorite part of these last four years have, when I looked through this room, I don't know that I knew hardly any of you four years ago, and to all the people that I've met these last four years in the business community, the friends that I've met along the way, the people that I've met just this last weekend knocking on doors. That has been for me the most rewarding part of this, this position, and I've enjoyed every minute of it. I think that compared to where we were a few years ago, I think that we are in a better place by any measurable, any, any way you look at it, really. I feel like we certainly have restored civility and transparency, accountability, collaboration, respect for our residents to City Council. I know we're not perfect, I will make mistakes, probably have already made mistakes along the way, but always with the, with the right heart, always with the best interests of the residents in mind. There's never a minute that that is not the guiding principle for me, is will this decision be what is best for the city of Loveland? There is no other criteria above which I measure any, any decision that I'm a part of. So I, I'm here humbly asking for your support this year to, to give me another chance for another four years to see where we can get together as a community.
Just for the information, many of you know that there also is another candidate who is running for council, and that is Pat Air. If you'd like to know any more information about Pat, you can go to her website, patairforlovelandcouncil.com. We wanted to bring that to your attention, thank you.
All right, candidates, I want to thank you. I think all the candidates really deserve our appreciation for stepping forward, putting their name on the ballot. It's important that we have people that step forward and are willing to serve the community, so thank you for doing that. Thank you for coming out tonight. This concludes our program, and don't forget to vote November 5th. Have a good night.